Here we are recording, thank you.
Thank you Paula and welcome everyone, this is the city of Cowan Heights, my name is Mayor Mike Peterson. This Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, it's just after 5 o'clock, this is our city's work session and we are meeting electronically and therefore I need to read a determination that authorizes to do so. And that determination states pursuant to Utah code annotated 524-2074, the city's mayor as a chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meetings of those bodies on this date at an anchor location present a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19 coronavirus, which has a potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic or find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, we are meeting electronically. Hopefully all of you have an agenda with you and on that agenda that stage, we're going to have a legislative wrap up by Brian Allen and Greg Curtis are two lobbyists, are they here?
They are just getting on, there are some technical difficulties. If it would be okay if you wanted to review the business meeting, I think by the time you did that, they should be on.
That works just fine. Very light agenda in our business meeting tonight, we have a police report and Lieutenant Dan Bart will be handling that and we have a public works report. With our public works director Matt Ship will be handling that and I assume those will be pretty straightforward. As we do those regularly, we have one action item this evening. It's a resolution approving entry into an independent contract agreement with Creative Energies. For locating and funding, looking first the funding and then working to include solar panels on our city hall. So is that Matt, you want to introduce that?
That's me Mayor. That I can introduce it now, it's also on our work session agenda a little bit later, so we can talk about it.
Want you to introduce it now while we wait for Greg Curtis to get on.
Sure, yeah, this is a contract with Creative Energies, went through an RFP process to to find a consultant that can help us both procure the Rocky Mountain Power Grant that that is very helpful in making these projects a worthwhile investment and a good return on investment. But then they would also perform the work as well, but the the grant program is time sensitive, so we wanted to get that underway immediately. And to do that, any consultant that were to help us on that grant asked to sign a contract with the city, so we put out an RFP. We got four responses and selected Creative Energies, so the contract in front of you tonight is contingent on two things. One would be successful procurement of the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Grant at a subsidy rate of I think 80 or 85% of the total cost. And then two would be the council in its budget deliberations approving the budget for the remainder of that expense, which is anticipated to be around $100,000. If if one or both of those things does not happen, then the contract does not move forward and there's no expense of the city.
So Mike, I understand the grant would be around 400,000 if our contribution is about 100,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, well that's appreciate that, any questions or comments regarding that action item coming during our business meeting? During that and you may have some then as well, but want to welcome Brian Allen and Greg Curtis are two lobbyists and appreciate your efforts on our city's behalf during a crazy, crazy legislative session. Looks like Greg Curtis has had some effects from that legislation, things growing on his face, but I guess that's all right, who wants to go first, Brian or Greg?
I'll jump right in, Brian, Brian probably has a much more extensive report than I do. Brian handles a lot of the issues and tracks and works with the league very closely and I just kind of try and chase the money.
Greg, can you turn up your volume by chance or?
I don't know, is that something to do on these?
That's better.
That works. All right, I'll just, I hate to lean in too close, I don't want to scare anybody. No, so I just kind of chased the money, as you're aware, House Bill 244 ultimately passed, we received some, I think a small one time and I gotta be honest with that, can't even remember if it was 350 or 400,000 a year ongoing for the next 15 years. And then we were able to direct some of the money put into the Trails and Grants Program that five, that $5 million is earmarked to in the Office of Outdoor Recreation towards the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Now that does require local matches as part of that grant program, but but at least they earmarked that there for that and so now those were kind of the two of the major things and then I'll let Brian fill you in on a whole bunch of the legislation and I don't think yeah, go ahead Brian.
I think, I think for clarity, I think it was the $400,000 number, it kind of increased as the legislative process folded out, so we appreciate that and it in that 15 years, that's that's valuable for us in our planning and of course Bonneville Shoreline a high priority, so we appreciate that effort as well, Brian?
Mayor, let me, I'm sorry, let me say one thing, one of the other things that we that happened right there in the last days, because there are a lot of cities receive this ongoing revenue stream, there was $30 million put into the SIB fund, which is the State Infrastructure Bank. And so if the municipality wants to capitalize all or a portion of that, there's that money available at least until it's gone, okay? So if the city said, hey, we have a $3 million request and we want to go in there and and over the next, you know, we'll dedicate this money over the next nine years or something like that, 3.6 million dollars and you could capitalize that immediately through the SIB.
How do they determine an interest rate on that?
It's the state's borrowing rate plus up to 50 basis points, so UDOT varies that that rate based upon the length, it can be a maximum of 15 years, but if you borrowed, if you borrowed a million dollars and wanted to pay it back in three years, it would probably be right close to the state's interest rate, which is last time I heard, I think it was between one and a quarter and one and a half, so.
Terrific, thank you. Brian?
Thanks, I'll be really brief, I think most of you saw the end of session report that I sent out, I'm not going to necessarily go over all those bills, but I'm going to hit some highlights. Obviously, the ADU bill was an important bill that we spent a lot of time negotiating and got it to probably as good a place as we could have gotten it to without killing it, which we would have liked to have done, but there was a lot of pressure from leadership to get that bill passed, so it did pass. The two billboard bills, we were able to kind of stall out, those that's, those issues are going to come back however, so we're gonna, we need to need to make sure that we work the league and help them work with the billboard companies to come up with some reasonable accommodations, I mean, the problem that we have is that they like what we do as a city. There are a few cities that do some things they don't like and that's what they're trying to target in these bills, but we end up getting a lot of stuff put on us that we wouldn't necessarily want to have, so we got to continue to work on that. You probably saw that Paul Ray's, Paul Ray's bill got vetoed by the governor, it had to do with some FEMA issues in the bill, not because the government was standing up for cities' rights and city autonomy and local control, he was, he was countering to a problem that was pointed out by the federal government, so that bill got vetoed, but he did say that he would like to work with the sponsor and stakeholders and bring it back for a special session, so we're not sure what that's going to look like or if there's any, if we get another bite at the apple or not. I think that got into a fairly reasonable place by the, by the time it was through the process, so it just, we just need to make sure that it doesn't go in the other direction in a special session once it's opened up again, so we'll keep an eye on that one, other than that, the rest of the stuff that was in the report, there's, I mean, nothing too remarkable. There's obviously anything that didn't pass is probably going to come back next year because legislators will be back and they never say die and they'll have some prefiled bills that we'll be looking at, you know, fairly early on here, so we'll keep an eye on all those things, but any bill that didn't pass, we can probably expect to see next year some variation of it, so we'll keep an eye on those for you, but other than that, it ended up being a fairly decent session.
So Brian, I understand they passed from Cameron Dale, I understand they passed about 12 or 15 different law enforcement related bills?
There were a bunch of them, yeah. Most of those, most of those bills though were supported by the Listen Love Lead Coalition and so they were viewed, I think, as you know, a good balance between community needs and law enforcement leads and so those were bills that had some consensus. I think most people felt comfortable with them, definitely put some guardrails around some things that weren't there before, which is not necessarily a bad thing and I think in the end it turned out to be, you know, a good, a good session for for both law enforcement and for the citizenry, I think there was good balance in the bills that passed and and you know, I'm hopeful it'll have the desired effect.
Okay. Any questions of Greg and Brian, I know that the weekly meetings were very beneficial to keep us all informed, but
They were, they were helpful, I was just going to ask, what actually does the ADU bill say or what is it, is it going to require some action on our part?
Well, you have to allow for ADUs in 75% of your residential zones, so it did allow the cities to require an extra parking spot on premise. If you converted a garage into an ADU and took away two parking places, you had to replace those plus one more. It did give the city some ability to regulate for safety issues and get them licensed so you could track what's going on. I mean, there were some things in there, I think they were good for the city. But, you know, I mean, you have to have ADUs down 75% of your zone, so you'll have to figure out what 75% you want to do that in and
Mayor, may I add on that one?
Please.
So also, yeah, we have, I believe until October to get ordinances implemented in the city, so we are going to have this as a discussion item coming up very soon, I believe the first week of May and we'll have a conversation, get direction from the council and then have ordinances drafted and start through the processes that we need to go through to get them back to you for final consideration.
And as a city, we're very close to having ordinance, previously we just had an issue on parking, so it shouldn't be real difficult for us to meet that other than look at that parking issue and decide on areas that we would not want to allow it, as Brian suggested, that 25%, yeah. Or we may want to allow it everywhere, yeah. Do you have, do you have a question?
That was my exact question, so thanks Scott.
Any other questions of Brian or Greg? Again, much appreciation from the council, again in those Thursday meetings and especially with the resources that are obtained for Bonneville Shoreline and that 400,000, that that goes a long way and especially to with stopping anything on billboard, because I know our city for decades is, well, not decades, but at least when we were created had some real challenges with billboard, so good work and thank you, we appreciate it and we won't make you stay around and we'll see you, talk to you soon.
We'll have a great evening, thank you.
Thanks everybody.
Thanks Brian, thanks Greg.
Thanks guys.
Looking at your agenda, we've already reviewed the business meeting agenda, so we'll go directly to staff reports and we have an important agenda item as well, they're all important, but this one has been discussed for many months administratively and that's our stormwater fee discussion, so I'll turn over to Matt and we've got a couple guests with us and we'll let you introduce them.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to visit with you this evening.
You're going to have to turn up your mic, Matt.
My, hang on a second, I will. Is it, is it working?
I can barely hear you.
How about now, anything?
No, not much better.
I've got help rolling in.
We can see him rolling.
Yeah. Working now? How about now Mayor, can you hear me?
There you go.
All right, I knew somebody who knew what they were doing, could have helped me. Anyway, we are, this is our second city council work session with Bowen Collins, if you recall, we brought in Bowen Collins and associates to help us develop our stormwater program that we can present to the city council as well as the residents for input. We have with us today, you met Justin last time, he did the presentation last time and he has brought with him today Emily, who also works with Bowen Collins and they will be doing a presentation, we have about a half hour slated for this. It'll be about 15 minutes on a presentation and then we'll have some questions and answers as we proceed forward, so I'll I will, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll turn the time over to Justin and Emily and we'll go from there.
Thanks Matt. Somebody give me a thumbs up if my mic is, seems like the trend that people's mics are down, everybody okay, can hear me?
Yeah, hear you very well.
Great. All right, so you also should be seeing our screen share. You're welcome Matt, I do what I can. So we've got this presentation and and Matt already did a great intro, so we'll just get right to it. So this is our meeting number two, so what we've got is quickly, we'll just give everybody the catch-up background. The Reader's Digest version from last time is, we've got some really old infrastructure in the city. We have a major need to get more on top of repair and replacement of these corrugated metal pipes that are corroded, we've seen a lot of erosion because of bad pipes, that kind of thing, so we've identified TO engineering last year or, yeah, about a year ago did a really good study that helped you identify your needs. You have about a million dollars a year in needs slated over the next 10, 15, 20 years, so you got a lot to do there. You also have the regulatory component, which is becoming more and more burdensome, it was pretty much non-existent in the 90s and early 2000s and now the Clean Water Act is becoming a big thing that you have to deal with and so that also comes with quite a bit of cost to do all the right documentation, inspections, enforcement. So we went over that last time and you've already done that good work to understand what that looks like and so we're here to try to get this over the finish line, create a policy and a policy manual and a program around the stormwater utility in your city so that you can meet the regulatory burden and also take care of your capital needs and have a good funding stream for that. So today now, what we're going to do is we're going to talk about our, what we've found with respect to the fee and your options there. We've identified our customer classes that we are proposing to go with which splits up the customers in the city into different groups and charges them a different stormwater fee according to their characteristics on how much they impact stormwater. So we'll talk through the details there. We will update you on how we're progressing on getting this thing built, you don't have a water utility that you operate or a sewer utility that you operate, so you don't have a billing system already, so we're going to talk about our approach to that and the progress so far in getting that going. We're going to talk about credits and waivers, credits help make the fees more fair to people who participate in helping you do your stormwater system where others don't and so it makes it more equitable that way. We'll talk through the details on that. We're going to talk about our progress on public involvement and then we're looking for feedback from you like Matt said. All right, so let's get into the big one, we started with, we decided to just go right to the meat of probably one of the bigger topics for today and that's to talk about the fee. So I think that all of, everyone on this call will be quite interested in this slide specifically. Back when you did your preliminary studies with Science Bank and TO, my understanding is that the council was kind of honing in on a $7.50 per ERU fee. And so since that time, we've gotten some updated data. We've analyzed the whole city, Melissa and your GIS department's been really great help that way and and we understand the customer base, we understand how many ERUs worth of stormwater fee are out there to be billed and so that allows us to do some revenue projection, so based on which fee you ultimately select and it's up to you as council to select that fee, you will generate a certain amount of revenue and so you can see in the middle column there that the lower the fee, the lower the revenue you generate and the higher the fee, the higher you generate. The header on the top shows the good work that that staff and again TO and Science did to put together a funding plan and revenue needs for the stormwater utility budget to handle all those capital improvements that you need and all of the regulatory compliance and administration that you need. So 1.7 million, so as you see there, you can choose any fee you want. If you select the 750, which is along the lines of what you had before, you're looking at about 1.1 million from the fee revenue and then needing another 560,000 for from the general fund. Or you could select this $11.21 fee, give or take, and our projections show that you'd be able to cover all of that 1.7 million on the fee alone. Or you can choose to underfund and take your capital improvements a lot slower, I'm sure the staff, some of the staff would love to not do that because it's harder to maintain them the older they get, but that's up to you, so this is, I think, a big deal and and I want to drive to the end, so we have plenty of time for questions. But is there any reason to stop here, should I keep billing from anybody?
I'll keep going, we'll save questions as we go, yeah, well, somebody had one, yeah.
I just said, these, the fee revenues and the use of general funds seems to be quite a bit higher than the last report, so we'll want to circle back to that.
Okay. Yeah, we certainly can do that. Okay, so we'll, we'll put a pin in that one and we'll swing back after we get the whole rest of the picture here. So billing, this is a pretty quick update. As we've discussed in the past, the plan is to utilize Rocky Mountain Power to build. Most of the surrounding cities use Rocky Mountain Power if they don't have their own utility bill already going out. And we're looking to do the same and we're currently negotiating that with them and so far we've gotten a lot of you know, positive feedback, they're working through some things on their side and so far we see a good path forward there and that's what we're planning to do. There was some talk about the quarterly billing, turns out Rocky Mountain Power bills monthly, it just makes sense to do it monthly, so that's the way we're planning on going that way. All right, customer classes, so as I said before, the customer class is a way to simplify administration but also be equitable to the customers. And so to build the stormwater fee, it's based on a single unit which we've called an ERU, there's lots of ERUs out here, but this is, an ERU just means we've put, made, created a baseline billing unit that is equivalent to the stormwater impact of a, of the average single-family residence. A resident, so that's 5,000 square feet of impervious area, we talked about that last time, but that's that's the hardscape surfaces that caused the runoff and actually put water into your storm in most, into your stormwater system in most storms. So it's your driveways and your roofs and your sidewalks and your patios and that kind of thing. We have five customer classes, we'll go through each one in detail on the following slides, but just to get our, our heads around the scope of this, we have typical single-family residences, we have large lot, single-family residences, they tend to have more impervious area than the typical single-family home. We've got stacked multifamily residences, so that's really apartments and condos. They have less impervious area and less of an impact, just because they're stacked, they have less of a footprint of hardscape associated with each one. Then we have non-stacked, that's basically your townhomes. And then we have class five, which is a catch-all that that captures all of those customers that have a unique stormwater signature, if you will, amount of impervious area. You have everything from the Walmart, the huge parking lot down to, you know, gas station that's obviously has much less runoff from it, so now let's go through each one of those. So on this slide, you'll see class one, class two, the single-family residences. We looked at the data and it looked like a good split was about at the half acre mark. So how we have it proposed currently is that lots larger than a half acre would have a larger stormwater fee and a lot smaller would have a smaller stormwater fee. And how that breaks out is on average, the smaller ones have 4,000 square feet of impervious. Our ERU definition is 5,000 square feet of impervious. Therefore, the typical home would be 0.8 of an ERU. And so if you were to adopt a $7.50 fee, $6 per month would be the actual fee that the typical single-family residents saw. And similarly, if the with the larger single-family homes, their average impervious area is a lot more. And so based, bringing that back to any ERU, the 5,000 square foot ERU, that's 1.6 ERUs. And so you'd end up with $12 per month if you adopt a $7.50 fee. Hopefully, everybody can follow that math. But and everything is based on that one ERU definition of 5,000 square feet. Here's your stacked same analysis, the average apartment or condo only has about 1,300 square feet for each one, including their parking lots and their pool and everything, so you're looking at 0.3 of an ERU for them, $2.25. Townhomes, they have a little bit more, they're half an ERU, $3.35 if you adopt a $7.50 fee. Then we get to the class five customers, this is really instructive because it really gives you council an understanding of the business communities, the impact that we're going to have on the business community with this stormwater fee. So each one of these are, are unique and so each one will undergo a custom calculation. And it's a simple calculation, we map out the impervious area using some aerial imagery and we divide it by 5,000 square feet per ERU to get our number of ERUs and there you have the number of ERUs that they'd be charged, if they were one, they'd be $7.50, if that's what you adopt, if they were two, they'd be $15 and so on and so forth. That would include churches, government buildings like City Hall. Yeah, you'd pay, yes, you'd pay your own stormwater fee to be have equity and parity with your other constituents. You've got parks, cemeteries, restaurants, office buildings and schools. All right, so here's a couple examples of those, so on the left you can see City Hall. We've mapped out the impervious area there and you've got 34 ERUs, 34.6 ERUs worth of impervious area. So you multiply that by your assumed $7.50 fee and your monthly bill will be 295. The mainstay suites, hotel, they're not quite as big, but they'd still be $90 a month because they're 12 ERUs worth of impervious area. A typical church has a pretty big parking lot, they're 26.2 ERUs, give or take and so 196.5 and then finally, the last example we have is just a 7-Eleven here. 17,000 square feet, so much less, only 3.4 ERU, so they'd be about 25, 50 a month. 17,000 square feet, so much less, only 3.4 ERUs. So they'd be about 2550 a month. All right. So that's it for customer classes. So our next big thing to cover for you is credits. So I already introduced credits. The purpose of a credit is to create more equity in your fee and more defensibility in your fee because you do have some area, some customers who have their own private detention basin instead of utilizing the detention basins that the city maintains. If they spend money each month and you're maintaining that basin, they could very well say, shouldn't I pay less in this stormwater fee than the guy who doesn't do this like I do? And and it seems reasonable that the answer is yes. And so credits are a way to acknowledge that some users participate in assisting the stormwater system and some don't. And so we provide credits, which is a percentage reduction off of their fee for that, for that help and that assistance. And so we've gone through the list of potential credits that we could offer, and we've dialed it down to a menu style where the properties would be able to pick and choose which credits they would like to do if they qualify for them. And so I won't go through the nitty gritty engineering details on these. Matt and I have gone through them and some of the other staff. But the first one would be private detention, like I talked about just a minute ago. Retention is similar, except for it's either they don't connect to the stormwater system at all, or they have a big enough basin that they actually hold all their stormwater on their property and don't release it to the stormwater system. Eightieth percentile storm retention, that's a new requirement that your new development is going to have to comply with per the new regulations that your old development does not. And so providing a credit for those new developments helps create some parity there. Private storm, private LID. So LID is an important concept nowadays, low impact development. So we have that in buildings. We have that in all sorts of places, and we also have it in stormwater. In stormwater, it's doing things that create both additional beauty to the community, but most importantly, from a stormwater perspective, help clean the stormwater before it's discharged to your creek and other streams, and ultimately to the Jordan River and the Great Salt Lake. So those are things like bio swells, vegetated strips, infiltration ditches. You can kind of see some pictures of those on the left here. Things where you run the stormwater through us through some soil or a plant box or something like that before discharging it. And that's a way that the city both meets its its regulatory compliance to encourage those kinds of things. But also just provides that or it meets the intent of the city to be a proactive and helpful, responsible city on the Wasatch Front, doing their part to doing your part to help with our shared waterways and keeping them clean. So it's a really nice thing to have in your program. There are also just treatment devices that you can have and maintain, and some of your customers do. So I'll offer a credit for that. And then facilities personnel training, again, that goes back to your regulatory compliance. It helps you comply with the requirement that the state has put on you to do public outreach and training in order to educate people about what not to put down the storm drain and what is okay to put down the storm drain, that kind of thing. Which, by the way, is pretty much only water from storms. So so there's your credit. So we're planning on offering credits and the depending on the impact that those credits have on your system will govern how much of a credit they can get. There will be a maximum credit allowed of about 50%. We're doing the analysis on that to make sure we have a good defensible number, but that's usually the maximum. So like somebody who did private retention, didn't even connect to your system, they would be able to get up to about a 50% credit off their bill. Schools often qualify because they oftentimes have detention or retention, you know, in their on their playgrounds and things. All right. So I think that's it on credits. I don't think we missed anything there, so we'll keep going. Similar to credits, we're also planning on offering a waiver program. So a waiver program would be for two identified purposes. One would be a hardship waiver. So every city, including Cottonwood Heights, has citizens and customers who are under financial duress. If someone is in that category, we're planning on offering them a waiver at 12 month increments or so at a time. And to keep that administration easy on the city, they would just need to present proof that they qualify for some other type of public assistance like EBT or the county's tax relief, property tax relief program or something like that. The other one would be for active duty military that are deployed. So if you have active duty military household member that's deployed, then it seemed like this is something that Cottonwood Heights wants to do is to offer a waiver similarly for that. And so those would be residential customers, obviously, to apply for the hardship or the active duty military. There. So there we go. So that's credits and waivers that is planned to be part of the program. Then we wanted to also update you on our progress with respect to public involvement. So we want, Cottonwood Heights wants to be transparent. We've certainly at Bonn Call support that. We've been working really well with your social media people and Lindsay, your new public involvement person and Matt to provide content and and create good updates to the public. So we have the website up and going. You can see a picture of, you know, a little screenshot from the website there. We've got a frequently asked questions up on the website. We just sent out a newsletter and we have a public open house that we're planning for Monday, the 19th. So just a couple of weeks away where we have advertised and invited people to come and we'll continue to do so to ask all their questions and we'll take comment there from the public as well. So we're nearly here to the questions portion and feedback to discuss this, but we also want to let you know just what the next steps are. What's the path going forward look like? Obviously, paramount importance is to continue coordinating and negotiating with Rocky Mountain Power and hammering out the details there so that we have a mechanism to build this stormwater fee. We'll be finalizing the customer list. We're working with your GIS department to do that. And then it will go into a final phase of reconciliation just before you implement the fee to make sure you have that up and running. So that's a huge undertaking that we've already made really good progress on. Good way to go still, but we're making good progress there. We need to value, value each of the credits, you know, is an LID bio swell 5% credit or is it a 10 or is it a 15? And what we do is we look at your budget and estimate impacts on it on your system to do that, to make those defensible. So we'll be doing that. We're going to continue with public involvement. You already know about the public open house coming up. So there we go. So what questions and feedback do you have? Let's go ahead and use as much or as little of your remaining half hour that you've allotted us to make sure that you've got all your questions answered.
Well, before we open with questions, just one comment.
Yeah.
I I look at this process much like truth and taxation. And as a city, we went through that a few years ago. Is that we're putting together our best estimates of what we feel is a efficient program, then we take public comment. But as a council, we have every right after that public comment to adjust the the policy that's being proposed, as well as the amount that's being recommended and everything. And that's what makes it palatable for me is that if I go into this, I want to maintain the right to adjust once we have public comment, as we did when we did the tax increase a few years ago. Then one quick question, I'll open up to everybody. What is the typical percent that Rocky Mountain Power charges to handle the billing for this?
That is a really excellent question. We, Matt just got us some some rough quotes. It looks like you'll have enough bills going out to be charged about 36 cents per bill. There are also some startup fees to get the databases. We all worked out that's charged on an hourly rate. But as far as a per bill cost, it'll be 36 cents plus the, you know, proportional share of whatever your startup and ongoing maintenance fees are. But the main thing to take away from that, I think, is to note that this billing would be being done for less than the cost of postage.
Then a follow up, and I'm sorry. And maybe this is to Matt. Does a city look at a need to have a full time person to look at credits and accounts and billings and all that stuff? I mean, who manages this program from an accounting and reconciliation piece?
That mayor, that's a, it's also a great question. As far as the credits in that, it's set up and Justin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's set up such that they make an application. They'll fill out the application and submit it, and that'll be reviewed internally by engineering. At that time, once we have the customer base set up, it's a matter of, we'll have to work out the process internally. Submitting that data to Rocky Mountain Power, they'll do, they'll do the meat work of it, getting it all set up in their program. It's it's that first month or so that working out all the bugs. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I, we've looked at internally hiring full time someone to do billing and take care of all this as well as other other things going on that we have needs for in the city. But we've chosen at this time, at least initially, to to work with Rocky Mountain Power to move forward.
But but the, but does Rocky Mountain Power literally have a better termed it, an accounting of every resident and who's paid, not paid? And I imagine it has to be some, some level of administrative support within the city to manage a program like this in addition to what Rocky Mountain Power does. Is that correct or not correct?
Though you are correct, but like I said, the administrative work, a majority of that is is done on the end of Rocky Mountain Power. We we kind of collect the data and we'll send it over to them. They actually have a department that does this. This is what they do. I've spoken to them. We had a meeting last week or the week before with Pacific Corp, the main, the main office, and this is where it all works out of. So they, like I said, they'll run the administrate, the the heavy media administrative work and will submit the data as as they come online.
Well, 36 cents is pretty reasonable. Scott, the Councilman Bracken, remember, we looked at this six or eight years ago, and it was much higher than that, to the point we questioned. Yeah.
And and Matt, you mentioned, if I want, like to jump in on that, I would just say that your budget that you've identified does include enough revenue to cover the cost of paying Rocky Mountain Power and then doing like what most other cities do, having like a halftime person, support person on the city's end take care of reconciliation and maybe some collections if you, you know, whatever the city side of that equation looks like. And you do have that in your budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rocky Mountain Power will submit annually a reconciliation statement that they've tracked everything on. So like I said, we'll get the report monthly and annually on what is going on with that.
Hey, Justin.
Yeah.
We spoke briefly as a council about potentially offering a credit for homes that zero scape their yard. Could we possibly add that to the credit list?
You do have a lot of discretion as a council. Matt mentioned that that had come up. And so I have a quick response there for something for you to think about. Zero escape is not going to affect the stormwater that is released to the system. And so usually some type of credit or incentive for zero escaping is better served to come from the water utility. That's really a conservation and and water source preservation, culinary water source preservation type of a incentive to offer. And it doesn't fit very well within the stormwater fees. I'm not aware of anywhere else that does that. I think that the LID credits that we are offering, it might be willing to, might be able to help the city check the box of what you're going for there, seeing as how it's kind of a similar realm of, you know, responsible citizens and beautiful desert. Recognizing the particulars of our, of where we live. We live here and we want to have clean stormwater getting down to the stormwater, waterways, the river and the lake. So that would be my initial kind of take on on looking at that.
But we did add in, which was somewhat unique rain barrels, dry wells and some of those other things that would meet some of those issues or concerns. Yeah.
Justin, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
On the variables that we have outlined here, does that change our projection? I was a little concerned that it looked like from the general fund, we were still at 580 or something. And I think Councilman Bracken mentioned that some of those figures are a little bit concerning after we do a fee like this. And then we still have general fund money coming out. May, maybe I just need clarification on where we're at with these variables versus where we were on a static type of situation.
Good, excellent question. Yes. So the, the, the studies that were done previously projected the number of ERUs of the total amount of impervious area that were, was expected to exist in Cottonwood Heights. But the data wasn't available at that time to determine what that looks like. So what we have now is we've analyzed the whole city. We've purchased the impervious data. So we know really how many customers are going to be paying and and it's a, it's a smaller number than was originally projected. And so there's a couple of things that I think are nice, or at least convenient about the way the numbers turned out, even though, yeah, we don't have as many ERUs in the system as we originally projected, which leads to usually either a higher fee or a lower revenue rate. The one is that I know that at one point you were looking at maybe even a $6 fee, and that would have had the the additional revenue. In relation to that, coincidentally, the the fee for a typical single family home, because they're smaller than 5,000 square feet, is $6 if you adopt a $7.50 fee. But yes, you're right. We just don't have the customer base that was originally projected. And so that is the reason for the differences that you're seeing. And yes, you definitely do have the prospect of forgive the term, underfunding your stormwater needs. If you do adopt a $7.50 fee and needing to supplement with the general fund or opting to do, take a different path with risk, with respect to your capital improvements. If you wanted to, though, as we've shown here, if you were willing to do $11.21 fee, that would be able to meet all of the projected stormwater revenue need based on the actual customer base that you have.
Mayor, may I add something on this?
Yeah, please. I assume it's going to be regarding the $1.7 million budget. Yeah.
Yeah, I I think really it's going to be up to the council on, obviously, on what what mix we want to look at as far as the fee and what the general fund revenue would be and how how much capital we want to have in place per year to address the stormwater. I mean, the council could make a determination that that they would want the 1.7 per year or or look at 1 million per year or or another mix. And it's really the prerogative of the council on how how quickly they want to get moving on the capital expenses. I think if you have a substantial amount each year, where we start is is going to be a good place. And then, you know, we can look at it down the road, but I think that mix is all dependent upon what the council wants to look at and do with this.
Hey, Tim, do we have a historical average of what we spent out of the general fund on stormwater?
And is it included in this chart?
No, it's not. We don't have the the historical average included in this chart. We had talked about this with you before. We, it's kind of fluctuated. There's been times where it's both operational and and capital that we've spent 600 roughly in the 600,000 range and but it's fluctuated. It's fluctuated down below that and and depending on what projects we had to address. But I know at times we have spent 600,000, but that's operation and capital. But I know at times we have spent six hundred thousand, but that's operation and capital.
Yeah, I've got a, uh, I'm going to hope to. Rest of council, it's, um. It seems very strange. Um, to unfortunately, the fix on this, I think is fairly easy, Justin, but it seems very strange to say we're going to have a seven dollar and fifty cent. Per month fee and that virtually no one anywhere will actually pay that fee. Um, not the sub half acre people, not the larger than half acre people. It seems like it would probably be a little easier to understand, certainly from the public standpoint and from a transparency standpoint. If perhaps we redefined our EDU. To be the same as that sub half acre, four thousand square feet and did the same math out. So that in that example, the greater than five acres would be two to EDUs therefore and so on and so forth. Because when you go out and you present, we're going to have a seven fifty increase. That's what people are going to hear. That's what they're going to remember. That's what they're going to calculate, even though. And that seems counterproductive to have to go back. Well, yeah, but really you're only going to have six. To me, that seems a little complex. I may be alone in that, but, um, I'm hoping maybe at least two of. Two other on the council might agree with me.
I, I would echo that Scott. I think you're spot on. I think we should probably. Uh, base the ERU around the, the lower unit, the half acre, whatever that is. Can consider that an ERU. It would be more simplistic and easy to convey.
And you're right, Scott, the, the fix on that's totally simple. It's just, uh, uh, redefining the numbers and, uh. And none of the other conclusions that we've talked about change at all, but we could definitely do that.
I love the equitable, uh, aspect of the ERU. So it is a good system.
I had a question, two questions. One was on the waiver. Is that a permanent for, foregoing of that fee or is that just a postponement?
Um, so typically what we've done, we've seen in other communities, and this is completely up to you and what you would like. Um, typically it's been a complete, uh, waiver, never to be recovered of that fee. For a certain, yeah, for a certain period of time. If you qualify, we'll just apply it for the next twelve months. For example, and if you want to qualify again, you gotta come back and re-qualify for the next twelve months. Uh, that's typically what we've seen in other communities, but that's, uh, that's really up to you and there's. Uh, you can slice out a lot of different ways.
How do you handle an HOA or a, uh, PUD that has common area? So small condo areas that the owner has, they would probably obviously go on that small. Does that get a separate bill? Is that a class five or, or what happens there?
Uh, so typically, and what we've shown in the calculations here. Is that the, um, all the, say, of the condos on the left there, you see they've got the pool house and. The parking lot and all that kind of stuff. All of that is rolled into each individual units. Point three ERUs. So we've just taken those common areas and we've spread it out, uh, across the people who are getting the. The, uh, power bills because we're trying to match what's going on there. Um, and so that's how that one would be paid. Um, and if the HOA had got a bill, technically they, they shouldn't. And if we get our customer class right, they will, but if they should, they would just probably pay the, uh, the point three RUs also. But we've taken that and we've just put it on the actual dwellings as opposed to putting it on. A portion of it on the dwellings and a portion of it on like the common area or something like that.
Justin, I have a question. Uh, I was contacted by one of the managers of one of the multi. Unit projects that he was concerned that they would need to be the collectors of this fee and. Their separate meters on some and some are not separate metered, metered. How would that work? For those properties that are multi-units and are they responsible for collecting? The share of that if they're not separately metered for their percentage type situation.
Um, so are you thinking like mixed use, commercial and residential, or is it just like a condo, uh, complex or apartment complex?
It's an apartment com, yeah, apartment complex that, uh. That they feel like they act, obvi- obviously are very portable and sometimes they're a little bit concerned about. Kind of being stuck with, uh, possibly that burden. And, uh, he had some very, you know, very good questions about how this would be implemented. This has given us much more clarity. Than we had when we originally started and that's where we came for the seven fifty. Because we were just planning on so many units, but this. This variable makes it much more, uh, interesting to see what our actual revenue would be. But they have, they have some specific needs for an apartment complex, not a condo pot project.
Um, so I think that we do have some flexibility on some of those more unique properties to either put them in the class five, if that makes more sense, or put them. Put each of the residences into the, say, class three. Um, if that makes more sense, I think the default would be to put them in class three. As, under the assumption that they're getting individual power, uh, bills to each, uh, condo. And if that's the case, then the HOA would have nothing to do with it and they'd be good to go. Um, if, I, and I don't know of any like this, but you never know what's out there. If, if they are, if they have like a one meter over the whole apartment complex for power sake. It would, it almost certainly makes sense to call them a class five. Uh, customer instead of a class three, you know, each individual one being a class three, just call the whole thing a class five. And bill that, uh, that property management company or the HOA or whatever it is. Uh, I don't expect that to be the norm, but if that does exist. We'd at least lean that way. And if we needed to make an adjustment, it would be going to Rocky Mountain Power to see who they're willing to bill.
And we can get further clarification on these, uh. I guess, non-traditional situations and I, I'm sure that there's, are a lot of variables. That's why. I think there's going to be a lot of, uh, work to be done on classification on some of these. It's, it's good to see this. Kind of pay for what you have type situation. I do like the premise of this.
And you're right. Yeah. So as our action item at the end of the slideshow said is, uh, customer list. Uh, most of the work left to be done is the heaviest lifting work, which is where. We're going to look at those mixed use and how to break it out, you know, is. Uh, that Walmart, that mini mall, you know, who gets a bill and how much of the parking lot goes to each one? There certainly is quite a bit of work to do there. Yeah.
Well, I, I support Scott's question regarding, uh. The fact that the seven fifty is a little bit of a misnomer and if we can look at the language. To the smaller, uh, ERU size is a sample. Now, we're kind of out of time. Is there any final questions? We had a couple of items on the agenda. This is very, very helpful and actually new information, even though I've sat in on. Several of the working meetings. So this has been very good, very helpful, but again emphasize. Emphasized to the council too, that. Once we take public comment, we have the opportunity to tweak. The, the proposal and that's why we have the public comment. Any final questions? If none, uh, Justin, uh, we appreciate your time and energy and, uh, joining us tonight and, uh. Matt, thank you for leading us to this point.
Thank you, Justin and Emily. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
Talk to you guys tomorrow, probably. Thank you.
Sounds great. Our pleasure. Thanks. Bye.
All right, moving, uh, on in the agenda, the next item is the gravel pit discussion and, uh. We have allocated about thirty minutes, so, uh. Mike, I know this is a heavy lift once again, but we're progressing and, uh. Will you share with us where we are today and, uh, what the timeframe is moving forward and any. Items we need to discuss regarding that application?
Thanks, Mayor. We'll do, uh, I'm going to give a quick overview of just. Uh, where this project has been. Um, I know it, it's been a couple of meetings since we've talked about it, so I'm going to go over this quick and then we'll plan to address. Two of the, the items we've heard. Uh, council questions or concerns about tonight, uh, one being traffic and, and. Particularly, um, the traffic impact on, on the holiday area to the north and the other being on building massing. Again, focusing particularly on the. The condominium building, which is the tallest building there proposed. Uh, sensitive lands I know is, is also a big concern. We are still finalizing some responses to those questions, so that will come. Uh, in two weeks at the next meeting. But I, I'm not going to go over all these. You can, you can see on the screen, this is just project background and, and this is getting to, to a point. Uh, but you know, we started with some pre-application meetings back in twenty, late twenty eight or early twenty eighteen, I guess. Uh, but this project really, it, it submitted a, a complete application or a, a paid application in August twenty nineteen and, and. Over the course of the past eighteen to twenty months has been through, um. An extensive review process at, at all the different levels that we have that review development applications. Um, that be, the, the first formal consideration was given by the Architecture Review Commission. Uh, from January to, uh, to April and into May, they, they reviewed this. Made some good suggestions, led to some changes, um, and they ultimately ended up recommending approval. Uh, of their component of it, which is, uh, the site design compliance. Uh, then we began the planning commission process in July of twenty twenty, um, and, and over the course of six meetings from July to October. The commission took public comment, um, gave the, the applicant feedback, um. Again, additional changes were implemented. And in mid-October, the commission, uh, recommended approval by a vote of five to one to the city council. And then it was then introduced to, to the mayor and council, uh, beginning in December twenty twenty. Um, and then December, January, February, we discussed different components of the project in council work sessions from. The, the ordinance and the master plans that guide us on this and, and help make our recommendations to, uh, sensitive lands. We had GeoStrata come in. Uh, Rockworth has presented a couple of times to the council, so we've tried to address some of the, the high level areas that we'd like to focus on. Um, and then kind of concurrently in January and March, this project was also discussed with the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee for their feedback. Uh, per the ordinance, they, they don't, they're not required to make a formal recommendation to the council, but we did ask them to send along any feedback they have. On the Parks Trails and Open Space elements of this development project. Um, so, so I don't, I haven't received any yet, but I certainly will pass, uh, any of that feedback along. We get it. Uh. So March twenty twenty one, we did not talk about it in the council meetings. We have been working with the applicant to make sure. Um, all of their documents are, are up to date, uh, any changes recommended by the planning commissioner, the ARC. Have been, um, you know, submitted and all the, the documentation is consistent from, from, uh, plan to plan. And we begun really trying to focus and, and, and refine the written ordinance portion of this. Uh, in preparation of us assembling this as a complete package, um, and getting it ready for council review. So April twenty twenty one, which brings us to where we are now, um. We continue our administrative review of the documentation. Uh, we have received. A handful of comments, concerns, questions from, uh, mayor and council members. We're, we're still working on fully responding to all of those and we'll do so and then we'll, we'll focus. Towards the end of the month on putting that final package together. So this is our recommended or anticipated roadmap, given the, the extensive background this project has been through. Um, and, uh, a desire to, to have a, a timely consideration of this. Uh, tonight, like I said, we're going to talk about traffic and building massing. In two weeks, uh, we would like to spend the work session talking about sensitive lands. And we would like to, to send out courtesy notices and hold a, uh. Part one, I would say of, uh, public comment in the business meeting. Uh, to allow public comments to the city council. Again, it's not a requirement. The planning commission is the formal public hearing. Body with, for land use applications, but, um, with a development this large and, and, uh. We just feel it's appropriate to have additional public comment with the council. Uh, in the meantime, throughout April, we will continue to respond to council questions and concerns. Response or questions we received to date, we, we are anticipating a full response by hopefully the end of next week. Which we will send in your, your weekly council report. Uh, then moving forward, we're anticipating May fourth in the work session, you will have a full project summary at that point. The final plans updated and assembled, uh, and, and continue to discuss any remaining items or questions that may have come up. Uh, would like to continue public comment in the business meeting, uh, in, in that meeting. And then. This will be, you know, a little bit up to the discretion of the mayor and council, but, but after that, uh, i- unless anything major comes up that needs. Additional time and, and discussion, uh, beginning mid-May, we would really like to have a final document in front of you all. Uh, and, and start, uh, scheduling that in the business meeting for potential project action. So, so May, we, we'd like to get that on there or into June. Um, but, but really we feel that we've gone, like I said, through this extensive process and we're. We're beginning to address kind of the final, uh, items and concerns that the council has identified. Understanding that both the ARC and the planning commission have recommended approval and, and supported this project. So, so we'd like to begin, um, preparing this for final action.
Mayor, may I just make one clarification?
Please.
Uh, I, I think on the day, the May eighteenth is the actual meeting date, not the.
Oh, yeah. Yes, that's correct. I apologize. Um, so, so that's just our, our kind of roadmap, um, from, from where we are tonight, uh, to the end of the project. And then obviously that, that. Creates a, a project entitlement and a rezone and a development code and a master plan. And then each phase comes back in for site plan approval by the Architecture Review Commission. And building permit approval. So there are numerous steps between now and actual. On the ground development, but, but the site entitlement and the rezone is the, the biggest first step that we've spent the last. Uh, year and a half or so on. So I'm going to transition and talk about traffic a little bit.
Before you do that, Mike, any, any questions on that timeframe to the council? Everyone understand that? Okay with that timeframe?
I, I have, I'm kind of alarmed because I, I was prepared to talk about sleds tonight and I have like a laundry list of, um, concerns. And now we've shelved it until the twentieth, but I'm going to be out of town.
We, we can, we can bring it back in May as well. Um, I know I, I've received a list from you. I plan to respond to each of those items and, and questions. And if we need to move that to the May meeting, uh, we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
No, Tally, and, and again, at the request of some constituents who asked that it not be on tonight, we're respecting that request. And, uh, and hopefully having an administrative meeting to review several questions. Raised with respect to sleds. Yeah, Mike was more than willing to do it tonight, but, uh, administratively, there's some questions and we probably hold a. A meeting, uh, sometime next week to administrative review those questions and, uh. Welcome to have a couple of council members. We can't have more than two to participate in that, to. Review the ordinance, et cetera, and that, the expectations.
No, that, I think that's great, Mayor. I know who you're talking of and I appreciate their time and energy and I think it's going to be beneficial. So, thank you.
Okay, so stop me anytime you have questions. I'm going to move on, um. Talk about our first item tonight, which is traffic. I want to start with the high level site plan here. So the, the traffic for this project, which again is just the northern twenty acres, we anticipate the, you know, the southern. Two hundred plus acres be, will be developed, you know, in, in, in the future, but we're not considering that at this point. But just a summary of the proposal and the road network in particular. Um, the, the proposal here, the, the existing road, hopefully you can see my, the, the little cursor. Um, the intersection at sixty two hundred south off of SR one ninety. Currently exists in this kind of configuration here and just turns off to the north. That road leads north into the Canyon Cove, um, neighborhood and holiday up to the, the Old Mill Golf Course and, and beyond that, even up to the north. Um, the, the city boundary is approximately where this red line is. That may not be exact, but that's an approximate location of the city boundary. So most of the, the road network being proposed and the changes to the road network. I actually think the city boundaries on the other side of the street here, um, i- is within Cottonwood Heights city limits. It's a, it's a, a Cottonwood Heights city road. Um, solution and, and set of challenges that we need to address. However, we have acknowledged early on in the process that this does have an effect on. Holiday City and, and especially the residents that live here in the Canyon Cove subdivision and use this road, uh, to get in and out of their development. So I, I would say an overwhelming majority of the public comments we receive at the planning commission level actually came. Almost specifically from this neighborhood. And, and a lot of them, I don't want to over generalize, but many of those comments were related to traffic concerns and. Uh, concerns of traffic getting in and out of this, uh, interchange and this intersection here with the new development. Um, so, so we've been very sensitive of that since this project, um, really started and, and have worked. On ways to address those issues. Um, so I may bounce back to this. On ways to address those issues. Um so I may bounce back to this slide here. But the uh I've zoomed in on that intersection. The current solution proposed that we feel um addresses a lot of the concerns that we heard. Um from the Holiday City residents. Uh i- it's not super clear on here, but um the original proposal proposed two stop signs, two two new stop signs. One leading in and out of the new project, the Rockworth project. And one across the street, which would um limit or or require a stop. Of traffic coming from the Canyon Cove area down in accessing on to SR one ninety. Um there was concern that this traffic would not be able to free flow flow like it does today. So through discussion and negotiation with um. With residents and with the developer and with some holiday staff and officials. Um i- it's not our preferred solution, but but something we can live with, especially to address those concerns. We've. Uh agreed and and the developers agreed to remove the stop sign on the northern side of this road. That will allow um. Traffic coming to and from the north, the established area to flow unimpeded. Whether they're coming into their subdivision or or leaving the area, that it will be a free left to the north and a free right coming south. So the only stop sign will be uh approximately where where the cursor is now coming. Out of the development or continuing from the north straight across into the development.
That's straight across south as a free flow?
No, no, straight across from the north to the south will also be a a stop sign.
Okay, good.
Actually, no, 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 you're right, Scott. It it is a, it's a free flow because there will not be a stop sign uh over on this north side. So that the only stop sign will be uh uh in the project. And and the only traffic that would that would queue or that would have to wait for for. The flow of traffic before they can turn would be leaving the project area.
Sorry, that that still doesn't make sense. So if I were taking a right from SR one ninety. Towards the park and ride towards this development.
Yeah.
Would take my right. If I wanted to go to the park and ride, I could keep going to the park and ride without stopping, correct?
You could go left to the park and ride without stopping. You could go right into the project without stopping.
So it's not, it's not, it's like not a curve anymore. Ignore the backdrop of the current road. It's. It's is you're re- are you realigning that road as well?
More of a T. Yeah, it has to be realigned slightly to. And and this is not fully and accurately scaled. It is re-realigned a little bit.
Okay, I still think that still doesn't make sense because if you're heading. If you're heading east free flow and turning on to Wasatch and you've got cars coming from the north going straight into the project. You have a conflict point.
Yeah.
Mike, if I can.
Yeah, please.
The uh the stop sign, there will be a stop heading north out of the project. So it's on the right side over there. You you're pointing on this, yeah, right there. And then there there will actually have to be a stop going west, I mean going. Going east on on that, the second stop. I don't have a cursor right there wherever you just highlighted, Mike. I don't know what happened there. Yeah, right there. So that there will be two that, the free flow will be from the north to the south.
So there's two stops.
Yes, I thought I kind of misled Mike a little bit this morning earlier. I I misunderstood a question apparently, so. One going east on before the curve and then one going north out of the project itself. So the only free flowing area will be going from north to south or north to west as you make that turn. And there will be some realignment of the road. Uh need to be some realignment of the road itself. Um. But that was one of the big concerns of the residents, our neighbors to the north. Was maintaining that free flow and then working with them. In the very near future, as this thing finally builds out, reworking that intersection.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, so so the 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 big free flow there would be leaving the neighborhood. Or or to the north coming out to SR one ninety. There would be no stop there. That's a continuous flow of of traffic.
So what is it? What happens on, say, Saturday morning, huge powder day? Um I'm I'm driving from Sugar House. I might want to make a left-hand turn off of SR nine one ninety to go to the park and ride. And all those cars are going to stop at the stop sign. And queue backwards. Are we are we creating traffic there or at five o'clock on a? A Monday through Friday, all those residents that are wanting to turn left to go back home? Is is the traffic study not showing that there's going to be a problem with queuing? Be stacking from.
There's a little queuing, but the there's not the the flow from north.
Sorry, no, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I just came off the highway. Sorry, I just came off.
Here, right here, right?
Yep, that's right.
Right, so so this movement here.
But I'm also, but I'm also talking about on the highway to right are on one ninety, making the left-hand turn at the light.
Yeah.
Both places, right?
Right, so so this turn, this motion here from north into the project. We don't see a lot of cars, a lot of vehicles using that, so I don't think that will. That would be the flow that that would dis- or that would create a a queue from this. Location here turning left. So so the traffic study doesn't anticipate a lot of movement. Straight through from from the upper Wasatch into the new project area. So the queue time should never be very long to make that left-hand turn. The longest queue that's created is leaving the project area. Especially at those peak hours where a lot of traffic is flowing from the north. Leaving the project or the the area to get onto the interstate.
So did what? Did did they not consider a roundabout here? I don't I don't know. I'm just like thinking about the roundabout. Or I I know Scott loves roundabout, so maybe Scott.
Oh, so that was an option that was explored. The grade is is very steep there, so it doesn't, it doesn't work given the grades. It's it's almost a. The roundabout and the size of it and where it would have to be located would first of all have to be cut into a hill and. Would be a, you know, eight to ten percent grade, which which is not uh good practice for a roundabout.
So you, yeah, you'd have to shift it down and to the left on this diagram to make that work without the grade. Because I mean, the reality is is that no-stop free flow is really weird and really weird. Equates to confusion and less efficient flow. I mean, or. A circle or roundabout there somehow would be a lot more effective of getting people through, but. Um, you know, you, I, we are on a hillside.
I will say, we looked at it extensively. It was modeled and it 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 really. Given the topography and that location and the constraints doesn't work there.
Was that just a cost, an engineering and a and a construction cost? That's. I mean, because if it's the right thing to do and this developer is looking to, you know, put in the the density that they're looking for. It would seem to be that we should be pushing the most effective option, even if it's more effects, more expensive.
So from a, I can let Matt address the roundabout question, but from a traffic study, uh the option that that. Um that we feel comfortable proceeding with that benefits. Uh the 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 area to the north, the the levels of service are are well above the. You know, the minimum that they need to be. So there's not a a major traffic issue here um caused by any of the solutions out there.
Um if I may, I, Scott, Councilmember Bracken, I apologize, Councilmember Bracken, I agree. That different does cause that confusion. It is a, it it is an odd configuration. We, in working with our neighbors to the north. Where we were trying to. Meet, I guess, if you will, what they would like to see to kind of help out. We wanted it to be a three-way stop there so that we had that. They they uh are the residents on the north. Wanted and to keep that as a free right. So so that they didn't have to stop along the way. Now, the other thing that's been brought up, uh. Councilmember Michael, also on the roundabout, um there was just a lot of discussion on a roundabout. The best location for the roundabout, not even taking cost into consideration, was further to the north. Uh well into uh Holiday's city limits. And they are opposed to doing that. Putting a roundabout there at the intersection, it's. It's not necessarily cost as it is uh. Uh geometry, there's a horizontal. As there there's, there's kind of a tilted elevation as well as a sloped elevation going in. And it just doesn't work for a roundabout in that type of configuration. The best location, and I think. Councilmember Bracken mentioned it is further to the west, to the north, off to the left. But uh Holiday does not want to see that in there. So it it's been a lot of back and forth on this one.
I know one time there was actually one that was agreed to, but.
It it is very confusing. I I would, I would agree a hundred percent. It's not ideal, that's for sure. And I I know that I can see Chief Russo has probably has something to say about it as well, so.
But but to that, but to the question of Holiday's concerns and the the current traffic study, does the current traffic study. Include um projections for further development of the gravel pit? Would that modify the position for the intersection as the other two hundred acres is developed?
So the, so we get into the issue there of of what we need to do in the short term to accommodate this development and its impact. And then the long term, when the full area is built out and and I think. To to that point, we absolutely will need to look at this long term. In the next five, ten, fifteen years, whenever the southern gravel pit development begins to. Come forward and and begin to redevelop and build out, we will come back and analyze this whole area because this will be a city road system at that time. And that may warrant further changes at that time of whoever develops that. That project as it is, it we can't require this, the developer, the northern twenty acres to. To accommodate all the future traffic of all the development that could occur to the south.
But doesn't, isn't isn't UDOT also going to propose and require access. Directly to uh the state road uh further to the south of where we are. I know. I even on your proposal here, I think you're going to have access near the ski shop.
Yes.
Then UDOT's got, gonna have further access into the site, so. Those are definitely mitigating impacts.
They are. So so one of the other concerns was this was the only point of access. When this was originally proposed. The secondary access point here was was identified as emergency access only, so it was gated off and fire department access only. Uh we worked with UDOT and the developer and and kind of pushed for that to be a regular access point. They have full legal authority to use that, this this access point. Uh i- is entitled and and all th- this property is allowed to use that. We verified that with UDOT. Um so so one of the requirements will be that this access where the ski shop is. Will become a regular access point for this development project. Until whatever time in the future that the southern gravel pit develops. And then when that happens, that project is entitled to at least. Three intersections directly off of SR one ninety. If UDOT's um what they're showing in their EIS alternatives comes to fruition and they're they're able to implement a a transit hub here. Then one of those intersections will be a. A major intersection that will allow almost a free flow of traffic from SR one ninety into the site, regardless of which direction you're going. And and yes, you're right, Mayor. We do feel like when the whole area is built out, the three. I say three now, but the likely three intersections will offset a lot of the traffic impact on this northern side because those will be. More convenient and and more accessible than than stopping at the intersection and coming in this way. So so we have a long-range need to look at this area and to continue looking at it. Especially as the southern property comes along, but but a short-term uh solution here, which I've explained to allow to require a secondary access point. Uh until the southern piece develops and to um to accommodate free flow of traffic. Uh in response to the concerns raised by Holiday City.
Mike, I have a question. On the, we know what's going on, going to go and happen on the south. Is anything on the north still? Is there any projections? Is there anything else that can be developed in the residential area to the north? Where this road is feeding that, is that pretty much built out or is that not? Built out to the north in the neighborhood there?
Uh that that's a good question. It's all Holiday City. I think that road connects up into Mill Creek even. I I think it's largely residential. Um it it it's it's seems fairly well-built out, but I don't know what Holiday's long-range plans are.
Thanks.
They also, Holiday City has procured funding to do a kind of its version of a Wasatch Boulevard master plan. That will focus on this corridor leading to the north, connecting Cotman Heights to Mill Creek. Uh they're going to begin that study uh this summer, it sounds like. And and we'll be very interested in in kind of where that ends up. And again, like I said, when when this road network builds out and connects into the south and there's a lot more development potentially here. Uh we as a city and 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 in collaboration with Holiday will will need to continue to reassess. These interchange areas. So the solution that works for this twenty-acre development. May need need to be modified or improved for a, you know, a three-hundred-acre development.
So so I guess my my concern is, Mike, is I appreciate that 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 network will be built out over time. But if I were to like, look at my magic ball and I think, when will the south be developed? It seems like we've been saying, oh, eight to ten years for eight to ten years or ten to twenty years that that's when it's going to be done. So. If I if I realistically think about it, by the time it gets built and the intersections get built, it could still be fifteen years away. Eight to ten years for the gravel pit to decommission a couple of years for us to go through the PDD process, a couple of years to get built. I mean, we're we're still quite a long way away and I don't I don't know about the other council members, but. Between speed bump calls I've gotten lately and Airbnb calls, I think that we've all seen. Um if this isn't done right. I think we can, I think we can venture to guess that we're going to be getting a lot of calls on this. And so that's my biggest fear is. Is yes, I understand all those other things may deter some traffic, but. The apartments and the condos and the hotel, I really don't see them using that other access point. And so I just, I know it's difficult for us because it sounds like you guys had an idea of what you wanted. Um and I don't know if that aligns with what Holiday wants, but if that's. If there's a better option that you all prefer and Holiday prefers, I would feel a lot better as a council member supporting that. Than maybe something that's agreed to by all three parties. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's, I think we should be pushing hard for what we believe is is the right option. Um for the community. And if you guys, but it's different than what you have presented here, I sure would like to see it.
Yeah, and that was kind of what we explored. We explored two roundabout configurations and one, you know, one didn't work, as Matt said, because of the geometry. And one was up, you know, up, maybe even farther north than than this screen shows. And wasn't um, you know, tenable to Holiday. So the the preferred. Solution that works per traffic studies is the, you know, the. Stop sign on both, you know, fully restricted intersection here, three-way intersection. Being sensitive to Holiday's concerns, you know, removing one of those stop signs. The traffic still flows, the traffic studies um still still um support that and and the levels of service remain high there.
So what are those levels of service?
I I don't off the top of my head, but the the traffic studies are all on the project website and I can get those for you.
But for the record though, for the record, Mike, can you correct me? And Tim, correct me. The staff has had numerous meetings with Holiday and we've had more feedback from Holiday than our own community with respect to that intersection. Holiday currently, I believe, has taken a position, it it literally can't support any of the recommendations. Until it completes its Wasatch Boulevard master plan. We don't have the luxury of waiting for the completion of that plan. We need to try and look at what's the best. Approach to take now that still allows us some flexibility in the future to adapt based upon facts and research. But Tim and Mike, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh by doing. The modification of Mike's proposed. We can still come back in and do what staff initially proposed later on without a lot of effort.
So so I guess what I would say from uh my engineering days back in my undergraduate years. I I don't see why we can't have an auxiliary or auxiliary lane. That when you're either coming from the north on one ninety, making the right turn and you could have a lane to make the right turn into the hotel or making that left turn. I I just don't see, maybe they have to lose some parking places, maybe their hotel gets shrunk a little bit, but. I I I don't understand why there's not an additional turning lane that would head right into the hotel condo and apartments. So it'd be two like, two lanes heading to the north. Yep, exactly. Can you help me understand why there's not an additional lane there?
I think you run into some intersection spacing. Um we can look at that and and answer that. You may run into some great issues there as well, but so. Where we are right now is. where we are right now is the solution right now works and and what's shown here and what I explained will work until however long it is until that southern piece develops. At that time, we will need to reassess the whole thing and, you know, and study that further, but that's, you know, through the natural course of of development entitlement and and, you know, the whole dynamic of this area will change when that large piece comes online.
Hey, Mike, have we considered asking the developer to scale back their development to reduce overall traffic?
Well, so so that's that's where we are is the the full development does not does not put any of these roads into a failing condition. Um, so so the data shows there's there's not a need to scale back. What's proposed here can accommodate the traffic. And if if it couldn't, then we would look at a different, you know, traffic solution there that could accommodate it, but the the metric we use to review traffic impacts to all developments in the city was applied here and and this solution works and and levels of service and queue queue distances are all at an acceptable level. Um, one other thing I'll clarify here is this is a phased project as well. So this, you know, if entitlement is granted on this, this whole site is not under development at the same time. This is a a six or seven phase development, which will also take you know, a number of years to to get anywhere near full completion here. So it's, for example, it's gonna be a long time before we see the condominium building. They'll start with the apartments and then, you know, work on some of the retail paths. The condominium is, I think, phase seven of seven or eight of eight or something like that. Um, so so it will grow into this as well and and probably see some overlap with the entitlement process of that southern piece. So so where we are right now, just to summarize on traffic is um, the 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 traffic studies, they've been done and redone and and we've asked the developer to to explore additional options um that for one reason or another don't work for either Cottonwood Heights or Holiday. Um, so the solution we have works from a a traffic engineering perspective, from a level of service and and wait time and and queue length perspective. Uh, it it will support this project easily in in the near term. And in the long term, we will need to, um, you know, to look closer at all these intersection points in these roads as the southern piece comes online. This will be a city road, so we will have full, you know, jurisdiction over that at that time.
Hey, Mike, is that phasing plan or timeline available for us to review?
Yes, it's on the project website and it's up to date. I I can pull it up here if we have time, but I'll just keep.
Find it on the website. Thank you.
All right, Mike, we only have a we only have a couple minutes because we also have uh two other items quickly, so.
Okay, so so maybe what I'll do now, I know Rockworth wanted to address some of the the condo heights, so we may give them five minutes, but I will send this to the council. Basically, what what this says is, you know, I know there's been some concern over the building massing and especially the the condominium height. The condominium building is proposed to be thirteen stories tall, which is assuming eleven feet of story is about a hundred forty feet. A maximum height allowed in the PDD at that location, which is over five hundred feet away from SR one ninety is three hundred feet. This kind of models the, you know, where all the buildings are in relation to the maximums they can be. That's not perfectly scaled, but it shows you even the tallest building is well under that maximum. This is from the other perspective in the apartment building. And then I I won't go through this, but we will send this to the council. Um, there is a lot of language in the PDD ordinance and the Wasatch Master Plan that really push for high density and and high density mixed uses and and walkable urban scale environments at the gravel pit. Part of the Wasatch master planning effort was um kind of a trade off. We we wanted to limit development along the Wasatch Boulevard corridor through the city and instead focus that that development and that intensity at the gravel pit, given that there's a large scar and and, you know, redevelopment there. We feel will be an improvement over the, you know, the the mined out property that it is today. So there is a lot of master plan support for building intensity and high density um and and building heights and and, you know, kind of pushing the envelope in terms of um densities and 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 building massing and things like that. These documents here, they show a lot of density and building height. These all come out of our Wasatch Master Plan. And and I think that's why, you know, a group like the ARC or the Planning Commission and and staff have supported that building height there. While it's unique for Cottonwood Heights i- in terms of where we've been in the past with developments, this has been contemplated in master plans and and it it really makes sense, given the context of the the large scar that's in the mountain there. Um, and and can can kind of cover some of that scar with without um, you know, completely sticking up and and being a sore thumb and and blocking views and things like that. So I will stop my share and and if it's okay, we can give a few minutes to uh to the Rockworth representatives. They prepared a few additional uh pieces of information to address the that massing concern as well. Um, Paula, do you mind adding, I think it's Sarah Lakomsky from the the attendees into the meeting?
Welcome, Sarah.
Well, everyone, this is Tom Henroyd using Sarah's computer.
Appreciate the discussion.
Um, Sarah's here with me. Appreciate the discussion and appreciate Mike's explanation. He has put an awful lot of work and so many things and so has Matt. Uh, that intersection, I would be happy to offline if any council folks in a number of two or less wants to talk about the intersection, we'd be happy to talk about it. Uh, we agree with what Mike has said about it, that while it's not our perfect solution, uh, it does work. It does work for Ryan Hales um and our our traffic engineer. And if you want him to come back, we can certainly have him come back. We can look at that model again at peak hours and you can see how many cars are coming and going. So aside from that, um, the building height issue, we just created a few more uh renderings for you to look at so you can kind of get a feel for, you know, what it's going to look like at full development. So we can share screen. Thank you. So hopefully you can see that. And we will pan through this. It's okay. Here is, again, this is the master plan rendered and accurate with the condominium building back here tucked into the hill. You've got the hospitality component right here, retail component, retail and office mixed use component and the multifamily for rent right here. Um, so just giving you that perspective. Mike already showed you this slide, which has been in your possession for quite some time. I just our way of showing a cross section at multiple points. So just to give you perspective, if you can see my cursor, the first one is a cross section that runs through the property about right there. And the second one is a cross section that runs through the property about right there. So you can see the differences in the buildings. This is the condominium building. And then this is the multifamily for rent building. Having said that, we tried to create a comparison for you. There aren't a lot of buildings that we could draw from that are on the hillside, except there is one that did come to mind that we think we compare with favorably. This, these are the condominiums that are in Immigration Canyon. You may be familiar. There are multiple buildings there. And this building that's out on the edge is the one that we focused on here. Uh, this building is fourteen stories over three stories of park, fourteen stories total with three stories of parking. One of the reasons why we think that our project compares favorably to this one is because from many vantage points, you can see how this building kind of sits out on the edge of the hillside here. As a result of it sitting out here on the edge, I what you've got is a blue sky backdrop for many different vantage points because of this, uh, where this building fits. And that's one thing we'd want to emphasize for many different viewpoints. Um, the building is the thing that you see foremost. And we wanted to compare some of these vantage points. So we called this one a drone perspective to be able to give you an idea of how our building sits. It's really tucked into this hill um with the mountain backdrop being very significant associated. This viewpoint, obviously from a drone, you still have that mountain backdrop, but you know, as most people are gonna be viewing it from a more human scale. Um, you can see that there's going to be quite a difference uh because of the amount of mountain that is behind this uh our proposed building. And this being a view from above, you can see this is a perspective we took from a drone. The building doesn't get up as high as the subdivision really behind it to the north. So this just gives you an idea of how we are tucked into that hill, uh, just as a comparison, looking at the Immigration Canyon condominium. That's that's our short presentation. I know you guys have many agenda items. We appreciate you considering this and looking at it. We know building height is obvious, obviously a sensitive issue. Do you think it's appropriate because of the mountain backdrop? I think it's appropriate based on the master plan requesting it. This is a good spot for it, in our opinion. It's got great access. It's close to business centers and services. We think this is a good spot for doing a condominium. I I would call it a mid-rise, not a high-rise. Be happy to answer any questions. I think, you know, Mike always does a great job of answering questions for us. I according to our application. Appreciate all the time, energy that everyone has put into reviewing this application.
I I have a question for Mike regarding heights. I I'm gonna be frank and honest with the council. When we created the PDD, we had a real debate uh on what would be the maximum heights we would allow. And when we put into three hundred feet, we we said that was the the maximum height. What, Mike, do you know what the tallest, the height of the highest building is in the Cottonwood Corporate, which is the closest commercial area that we have?
Yeah, I think it's I those are, I think, six or six or eight stories. I think they're about, I they must be six or seven stories. I think they're about eighty-five to ninety feet.
And and what's this one then in feet?
Roughly a hundred forty.
So approximately almost twice the height.
Yeah, yeah, thirty to forty percent higher.
Yeah, okay.
Again, tucked tucked in, I mean, I think context is is also key there because this is.
No, you know, you're right. I I hear you and I understand that. It's always been the issue with the the set closer to the mountain, stuff like that. I just was thinking of comparatively speaking, when you drive through Cottonwood Corporate and looking at height, driving through this and looking at height, when you come off I two fifteen, looking at heights and coming off State Road one ninety or seventy, whatever it is up there, looking at height.
Do we have an idea of what the uh mined scar is up behind this building?
At this location, no. I think in other locations, it's it's three, three to four hundred feet. I'm don't quote me on that, but we had measured that at one point. That's that's to the south, but it's it's quite a ways up there. I I don't, again, have an exact number, but I think the uh the the industrial kind of, they look like tanks. I don't, I don't know exactly what they are that are sitting out there. Those are, those are in the ballpark of eighty to ninety feet tall as well. And you can see as you drive by there and kind of contextualize those those industrial structures that I believe are used to process concrete or asphalt or something. They're they're very tall structures, but you you know, tucked into that site, they they don't look nearly as large as a five or six story building would.
I mean, that that's what I'm, maybe I'll see if I can find a contour map to find out what the height of those, the roads are from subdivision behind it. Something that they can look up there and see and say, okay, that's two hundred and this is one forty. That would, that would help me, so that's why I asked, uh, you know, what what does it look like before? Because it's how far up that mountain does it actually go? I think it's pretty clear that the building is certainly not going to go above the mountain where you're gonna be looking, you know, it's just too close. You'd have to, it'd have to be a much, 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 much taller.
And and we can, as part of our response to council questions, we'll we'll address some of those. Contextualize the building height, you know, with the mountain and the the roads in the area and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I know that there was a view that was shared previously from District Three down in uh the Old Mill Valley area, looking up, there's that that whole community has had questions for years with respect to the the mining and the future development. And I I think uh there was a view looking up that from there before.
Yeah, I can, I I know we're low on time. I can share it very quickly, Tom, if you don't mind stopping your screen share. Sorry. Believe that is what you're referring to, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah. And to me, that view makes me a little uncomfortable. And but again, it's out of context because that shows the old mill. And once this area is developed up to Wasatch, that may all change, but it's it's it, yeah, it's an interesting view.
Yeah, I also, we've clarified before, this is not final color, architecture, design, anything like that.
Yeah.
So right. I would just request, as this moves forward, if there are more questions or comments or or things that you'd like us to address for you, send those to us by email. And and like I said, we're gonna try to respond to as much as we can by the end of next week for everybody.
And I know this will be on the agenda in the next couple of meetings. And Mr. Henroyd, thank you for your understanding patience. This is the big project and it sets the groundwork for the rest of the development of the gravel pit. So we're trying to be judicious and make sure we vet everything appropriately.
We appreciate your review and time and effort associated.
Yeah. All right, uh, here, nothing else on that subject. We've got two other items that I don't see how we can get through both of those. So let's quickly review the City Hall solar contract, then we'll decide how we want to deal with the fourth item. So uh, Mike Johnson will turn that to you as well.
Yeah, Mayor, I gave a an overview of this at the beginning of the meeting, but this is a a contract with Creative Energies. After going through a bid process, we felt they were um, they they gave us the most comprehensive quote in terms of price and and gave us what we felt was the best chance at procuring a substantial blue sky grant through Rocky Mountain Power, which is really necessary to make this project um, you know, appealing from a return on investment perspective. So this contract would be with Creative Energies. It would require them to submit a grant application in our behalf uh for a, I think, an eighty to eighty-five percent subsidy of of a solar installation at at City Hall. Um, it would also um enter an agreement with them to actually conduct that work, which would be a structural analysis of the roof fabrication and installation and labor and everything associated with that. And so the total contract price is is just over five hundred thousand dollars, but with the subsidy that we're requiring to move forward with this, the cost to the city would be about a hundred thousand dollars. The contract prior to moving forward is contingent on two things. One is the grant must be successfully procured. And two is that the this, the remaining funds must be budgeted by the council in the the July approved budget for next year. If if neither or one or or neither of those things happens, then the contract does not move forward and Creative Energies is aware of that. So we just wanted to to explain it a little bit because it it has those two contingencies, which makes it a little unique, but that blue sky grant is time sensitive and they've already actually begun working on that for us. Um, but but that's time sensitive, so we wanted to get that in place, but they wanted a contract, any installer wanted a contract before they did the work to apply on our behalf.
And I I sure. Go ahead, Scott. I I um, I know when we built City Hall, we tried to make the, we made things so that they were solar ready. Was that taken into consideration on the bids on the contracts or is there a chance that that the actual overall contracting costs could go down?
Yeah, yeah, it could go down. It, we feel this one, some of the other one budgets we received, we felt like there were hidden costs. This one, we don't. So this, this will include a you know, a full structural analysis. And if that's not necessary, based on some of the other work we've done, then yeah, that cost would decrease.
And I assume this is part of our interlocal sustainability action plan as well. I think we've all seen that that sort of put together from Samantha, Samantha.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking at the website, Mike, and it looks like um, if if this website is up to date and accurate, it looks like in Utah applications are being accepted and total funds available are eight hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
So that that, and we're looking for how much of that?
About four hundred thousand.
Okay, so that that seems tough to me.
It it may be um that that was actually the amount recommended by Creative Energies. They felt confident that they could procure funding in that amount if they got the the application in quickly. They felt confident that they could procure funding in that amount if they got the, the application in quickly.
Do, do you know, are they applying for other large customers like?
I don't, I'm not aware of any currently. They, they have for other large customers in the past, which is what, and, and they've procured large amounts of funding in the past, which was again, one of the, the reasons that going with them was, was more appealing to us.
And, and what, what does our business manager say about it? The Rocky Mountain Power Business Manager that's assigned to us, have we chatted with, I forget his name. I know he's.
I think his name's Travis. I don't know that we've contacted him, but we could follow up. I, I think it's a different staff or division that administers the, the blue sky grant.
Of, of course, of course, but I think as your, as our business manager, part of their job is, from what I understand, is to, to help their member city, right? Get, get what we, we would like. So it seems like that would be a good, a good reach out for us.
Absolutely.
That was my question is if we commit to this, we don't want to realize that, that those funds are no longer, you know, available through Blue Sky. And I don't know if the chicken or the cart needs to go before the horse or how that works.
Yeah, and that's why i- if the grant is not procured, that we are under no obligation to continue with this contract.
So, so I'm just looking here. So it looks like additional weighting is provided for projects that advance new and emerging technologies, including solar tied to electric vehicle charging. Is there some way that we can do that? I'm assuming you guys have looked at all this stuff. I, I'm just normally in the weeds here, so it's, 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 it's fun to see what you guys are thinking.
Yeah, I would have to follow up with you. I don't know exactly what we've put in that, but I know Sam and our contact with Creative Energies have been working together to, you know, to make our application as appealing as possible.
We're not a blue sky customer yet, are we?
I don't think so.
Is that something we could throw together, put together really quickly? Anyway, okay. Well, good luck. It's.
Yeah, we're kind of following their direction. They, they felt that we should apply for, for this much in subsidy and that a project of this size that, that we could kind of spotlight as a municipal example would be appealing. And they seem to have a good relationship with the, the Blue Sky program and, and the people that work down there. So we felt like this gives us as, as good a chance as, as we'll have, I think.
And do you know the blue, can you send me the blue sky person that you guys are dealing with?
Uh, yeah, I can look that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Just a comment. I hope that things go well. It's, it's a fruition of, of an idea that was tossed out in design build on City Hall. So it would be nice if we can get things worked out and actually have it come to fruition.
It's always been a priority. I know from this council, previous councils, I know Samantha coming on, it's, it's part of our sustainability action plan. So to me, it's, we want to do all we can. And if anyone has contacts or can help, you know, we appreciate that as well. But we need to be proactive and get some things in, in motion and it may be an opportunity to modify going forward, but that's, I, I, I'm fully supportive, yeah. Any final comments on that? Hearing that, we have just four minutes before our business meeting and we have one additional item that is going to take probably 30 minutes to get through. Yeah, I also noticed that the business meeting is quite short. It may be about a half hour. Is everybody willing to come back for a half hour after and talk about the road standards discussion?
Yeah, I think we should. It's, it's certainly ripe for discussion.
Yep, I, I think it is. And with the short business meeting, I think that'll work. We'll still have everybody through by eight o'clock. So with that, unless someone objects, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn from our work session and reconvene at the close of our business meeting.
So moved, Mayor?
Let's move by Councilor Bruce. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilor Peterson. Any discussion? Hearing that, everyone in favor, please say aye.
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 More importantly, anyone opposed? For the record, no one has opposed. We're adjourned and we'll see you at our business meeting in three minutes. Thank you.